We don't have them recorded yet, so she's working on them. So everything else, we have some department reports and we have two continuing education certificates. We got criminal justice information services for Ms. Carla Brooks and Ms. Brenda Smith. So we accept those. So I need to motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the previous minutes. All right, all in favor? All against? Okay, we'll go to item number one on the agenda is to discuss and if appropriate, apply for at Jesse Elite Park on Cal Creek on Highway 363. That's Brother Danny.
Yes, I've been trying to get things back. We've got tables, we've got two barbecue pits out there now. I like to get a pavilion put out there with a slab so that community can have birthday parties and be cool and all that. I've got a boat for the building and slab and everything that's right under $8,000. But SRA got some $20,000 grants. And I'd like to apply for them to see if I can get this underway. Trying to give back to the community.
All right, does anybody have any questions on?
Yes, just because we've had so many questions about grants, there's no match or anything. Just a...
Yeah, just one time.
They go and give you one time.
$20,000.
For whatever it costs.
I sure like to make the motion to get $20,000 from the SRA.
Listen, by Mr. White of the green.
My second. Same. May I back Rich away, all in favor? All against? All right, item number two, discussing if appropriate, open bids for '05 Ford pickup precinct one as Danny Benson.
Only got one bid in is for the '05 truck that don't run, it just sits in my shop. I got a bid for $152 from ninety... That's the only bid I got. Y'all want to set it? Y'all let me know.
You have the title to go, right?
Yeah.
You have to get three, two or $300 with the scrapyard. And just...
I'm with you all. Or decline it, we decline. Are there be all, sir?
We got time to talk to the scrapyard.
Sure.
You get them. Yes.
Do you have, do you have these, the hollowed through the scrapyard? I got loads of them. I'm going to vote, make a motion to decline the... I make that motion that we decline that bid of $152.
All right, motion is laid by... White, do we plan to bid? I need a second. Say goodbye, Mr. Fonby, all in favor? All against? All right, item number three. That's the old tax building in precinct one, that's Commissioner Benson again.
No bids. I don't know what to do. Don't want to tear it down or drag it off to the back. So tell me what to do.
Do we do kind of advertising?
April, June, week, Thursday, October.
Can we donate? Can we donate?
I don't know, whatever you all.
It's the thing most people call to move. That's likely when you get any bid. You'll put it up for donation with the understanding that they pay to move it. Possibility, you want to get rid of it, right? It's in the way, it's in the way. Quote unquote, fire risk for the Google, basically.
Yeah, I like to see it done.
I vote. Sure, trucking.
I believe I can take that now.
You get him from both.
I would...
You're thinking that loud, eh?
I could demolish you, thank you.
I say leave it up to Commissioner Wilson to figure it out.
Yes, what if, I'm saying, whatever, whatever you want to do with it, we've got no bids on it, if you want to donate it to a nonprofit. The work's up to you.
I would just say it this way, just leave it up to Commissioner Benson to work with the proper authorities to get rid of the building.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I'm going to just throw a note out there, I'm past permission outreach and we are not touching that bill, not going to get involved. I had a huge bar, but I didn't... I respect that.
So you made the motion?
I said.
All right, motion is laid by Commissioner Fowles, say goodbye to Mr. Fonby, all in favor? All against? All right, item number four, discussing if appropriate, approve amendment number two to the professional service agreement, task order number one between Newton County and Widow Brian's LLC for debris monitoring and consulting for the HMGP DR 4266 buyout program. Okay, but on that, the Sabine River Authority has agreed to place a hold on the fifty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-seven public worth of invoices until we get it all worked out. They want to see the two properties demo. They would like to continue on with Widow Brian. With that being said, and we approved twenty thousand, there was two thousand, a little over two thousand in the fund, and now we're thirty-five hundred negative. So in the past month, we spent twenty-five, a little over twenty-five thousand for Widow Brian. Now, how much is it going to take from the continues?
That's something we should, I see.
I mean, we can't...
They can only work as fast as the SRA is working.
I know, but we can't have... Have a certain set, you know, before it was twenty. So the SRA wants to continue tearing the house down. I spoke to Travis Williams this morning, he sent me the letter that they're putting a hold.
One question, on the hold, is that why? How long is the hold going to be? I mean, they were approved to be paid in the last... And we've been, had the check walked up because there was some time running. But you need to void that check?
Yes, go ahead and void the check. Here's a note on, it said, please note that the hold on these invoices is only temporary to allow Newton County the ability to finalize demolition of the two outstanding properties and resolve the outstanding issues between TDM and Newton County in relation to the HMGP grant for DR 4223 and DR 4266. To allow us time to get things worked out with TDM and to finish demo of these two houses.
So, Judge, I spoke to the member of the SRA this week, yesterday, and this discussion about what if we don't do things work down, I understand talking to that representative was the way it works. They invoiced us in the past, we paid them full, and when we got that, we said that TDM got reimbursed seventy-five percent of that payment. Reimbursed twenty-five percent to get a full other person's reimbursement, but it takes the initial cost upfront. And I'm not saying all of that process that's happened in all those demos, I'm just saying that was the process of describing. We paid $22,000 for the last.
Is that total cost with Widow Brian and...
That's the cost to the SRA. So... I mean, the homes, I'm not sure about the homes that you had up here, but look, these prices, they're going to happen to around $10,000.
Correct.
Those were much smaller in scale. So that twenty-two thousand might need to be repeated, do it again, and then probably double price probably, I'm speculating, at least more. So you're looking at another $50,000 for the SRA, top of the fifty-nine. So that exceeds a hundred thousand we already allocated for the SRA. So we've got... Possibly be a money in that SRA allotment for Widow Brian? It's not going to be. We're, based on these numbers, we're very likely to exceed the hundred thousand if I live a part. And I think Commissioner Benson put this on here, there was some question about that not having to be paid at all, right, Commissioner?
Right. But we still need to move. One voice, one vote, I say we still need to move forward.
Well, we have $32,000 out of them. But we allotted $100,000, right? And then if you back out the, if you back out the payment to the SRA, which is a $60,000, we got, we got $32,000, thirty-two, four, five, six. I say we put all of that toward, and I'm like preacher, I'm only one vote, but I think we ought to put all that toward Rita, to Widow Brian, to where we can finish this. Because the SRA, they'll finish it within that amount of money, I think, my opinion. This could, it stems with them because they're the ones doing the demo. If they don't have a full crew that day, then that means they're not going to get as much done that day. Well, the next day, they might show up with crew and a half and make up the difference. So I can't answer all them questions, but I'm like preacher, I don't think we can delay this again. Yeah, the question is, it's been three years in the making. And when I see these, when I see these... These are the cost. There's a lot of this concrete's not being taken to the land in store. So these are elevated costs, and I'm just sitting here just questioning in my mind, if we don't think that we're going to feel this decision, if we're sitting here as a court saying, we know we're not going to get this money back, I'm not saying that, I'm just, if that's our stance. We're spending money for Widow Brian for what? We done paid twenty-five thousand, we're not halfway... So there's at least another twenty-five thousand, then asbestos comes into play on these last homes, is it going to be elevated because of that? So we're looking at spending another hundred and forty thousand with the fifty-nine plus the demo cost and the cost for Widow Brian. And if we know we're not going to get it back, I mean, should we consider other demo laws?
We know we're not going to get it back.
No, we don't. We don't know if we're going...
Well, based... Well, we have, that's part of the money we have to pay back. Let's see, nine hundred and sixty thousand that they're saying we owe, so we're not a hundred percent sure if we have to pay it back yet.
There's, there's one sure thing about it, if we don't move forward, you're going to get it. You can write that down in the book somewhere.
Yeah. So do we spend... On the chance that we may not have to pay all that back? Or do we take a chance and, you know, demo the houses itself?
So that's where we get Widow Brian, and here to tell us on the cost's been elevated to move up through the first twenty thousand, was that twenty thousand's going to be more than enough to get this done. So we're going to be sitting here in two weeks saying, I don't know how much, what are we, what are we considering improvement for Widow Brian today?
From what?
What are we doing today? I'm with you. So it's not, it's not their fault. They can't speed, they're only there to monitor. They're not there to work the SRA. So if the SRA was sending five crews down there, then Widow Brian's cost would go down like it would any other business. So maybe, I don't know, I just, I just don't want, my opinion is, we, this has been over our head now for months, and we've been trying to, all of us have been working hard to see and meet the deadline, right? Which should have been, in my opinion, should have been took care of before our March sixteenth deadline, but all of us didn't know that, not one of us up there knew. So just for clarity, the deadline on demo may of twenty-one, not March of twenty-three.
Well, the extent, it was, yeah, it was March the nineteenth, March sixteenth.
That was when the, that was when the close out of the project, not the demo of the home.
I'd say we purchased, supposedly had six... November of two thousand nineteen and January of twenty-twenty, so... Yeah, he answered. Mr. Berg, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, it cuts out here and there, but yeah, I can hear you for the most part. How you doing?
Okay, I'm doing fine. I believe some of them had some questions. Now, what do you anticipate it's going to cost to finish this project out?
So here's the issue, it's hard for me to say because I'm at the mercy of SRA. We monitor SRA, it depends if, again, if they have a full crew that day, what's going on? It's running around forty-two hundred to five thousand a week. I'm running a bare bones crew, one person at the final, a supervisor and one person at the load site. I'm barely charging you anytime, if any, for myself, I'm doing your data for free, I'm trying to cut the cost as low as possible. But it's somewhere between, you know, the four, five thousand per week is the average. But again, I'm at the mercy of SRA. I would love to give you an exact number, these, this round, the properties were bigger. There was a ton of concrete at the Thompson property that had to be moved from the saw mill in the back, and then you're dealing with the asbestos side of the situation now on these last two properties. The Thompson property that we stopped, we're just about done with the concrete, we just got to get the house done, but SRA has the contract with the asbestos company to do that, and then move on to the Bryce property, and then we should be done. I talked to David at SRA and he thinks another month and we should be able to knock it out. But again, until you get into the properties, it's hard to say.
Okay, you cut out on us when you said you talked to David.
Yeah, I talked to David at SRA, I said, what do you think? He, he's hoping we could be done, if we start back up, we could be done within four weeks is the plan. That's the goal.
All properties?
All, all the properties total in four weeks?
Yeah, so we're almost done with the second Thompson property, other than the house and a little bit of concrete. And then everything will be, remaining will be Bryce. Now, I, I heard the conversation earlier about having to pay back if it's not approved. So if you do decide to finish them on your own without monitoring, you would totally jeopardize it as far as getting any reimbursement. Your monitoring and your SRA invoices that you'll be charged for, you should receive seventy-five percent of that, back from TDM, PDM, FEMA.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Berg.
So, so Mr. Berg, you said we should receive that back, are you aware that projects close?
Right, but my understanding was y'all were trying to get it approved and get these knocked out so you would not have to pay back what was already paid to you guys. I mean, that's not my side of the house, but I would recommend finishing by monitoring, that's up to you guys, but if you don't, then you'll, you'll definitely be paying back TDM for sure.
FEMA has come back and said that everything we paid to SRA... But what I said, FEMA has came back and said that everything that was, we paid to the SRA is not allowable due to what they perceive as not following proper procurement. Even though we had the interlocal agreement, everything with the SRA, FEMA's not allowing any charges that we paid to the SRA on these grants.
Yeah, I, I couldn't speak on that because I know that was all set up way before we came in to monitor, when y'all used to have a different monitoring company. So I, I don't have the answers on that, unfortunately.
Yes, so Judge, you're saying that fifty-nine thousand dollars that we're putting hold, the SRA's put hold, FEMA has told you that none of that...
On all the letters from TDM, that's... Point two, on the one we got in two thousand eleven, SRA, two thousand sixteen, SRA, that proper procurement wasn't followed. Now, I don't know, we've since found the interlocal agreements, and we're going to try to get that money, you know, taken off of what they say we owe, but you know, it's a shot in the dark.
If we're wanting, we submit paperwork, then you send that shit back.
I just, it's just hard for me to believe that the SRA's been doing business with this county that long, and there's not been a proper receipt, procurement process.
It's there.
Okay, it's got to.
It's there, but...
Rosemary, can you help us with any of that?
I found the contract yesterday, that, and the county clerk tried to find the signatures on it, because I know we did it. And it should be right there. Should be between Talita BN, joint venture, non...
Right, Talita BN Projects. But started with Talita BN Projects, which we all know is SRA, I mean, it's just important on what contract it's in. So...
Then I'm having the county clerk's office looking up, it's in seventeen.
Yeah.
So in this case, I'm like, we did.
Sure.
Is that true? Sabine River Authority, see there?
They've got a form on the back of, or their board, where it says...
Yeah. Yeah. That's the one that sent this one.
Right, right, I thought.
That's who we paid.
Yeah.
Well, that's the interlocal agreement between Newton County and Commissioners Court, twenty seventeen, so there should be one prior for the Hurricane Ike grant, and we just have to put our hands on it. Now, we did, from what I've seen, the SRA has, they've put forth a proposal, there's a couple other contractors that bid on the demo, so we have that paperwork that we're submitting to TDM.
So, Mr. Berg, you're saying that for twenty thousand dollars to Widow Brian, you can complete the projects after talking with David Williams, is that what I heard?
Well, you're, you are negative thirty-one eighty-nine and some change that would come out of the twenty if you increase the twenty, so you're looking at, what, seventeen, sixteen something? We can try our best, like I said, it's between four thousand and five thousand a week is maybe a little over five sometimes is what it's running. It'll get us close, I can tell you that. I, I can't promise you we could complete, but it gets us close since you are in the negative of three thousand one eighty-nine.
So what I'm hearing is if we, if we do away with the monitoring service, lessen the chances of not having to pay back. If we go forward with the monitoring services, we will have spent, I mean, the SRA monitoring service, another hundred and sixty thousand dollars on top of what's been spent in the past, by the time it's finished, by the time the SRA's done, we get through the monitor. You're saying we need to approve today twenty-five thousand dollars to get this done, Widow Brian? Mr. Berg?
I would say twenty-five should get it done, yes, sir. I mean, even, even just taking the twenty and adding in what's your negative right now should get it done. I mean, he was, he was confident in, in a month, so, but again, like I said, I'm at his mercy, so we monitor that.
Well, let me ask another question, originally we approved... Enough to get it done, you come out to twenty-two thousand. In my understanding, the reason we didn't get it done was because of the work scheduled by the SRA?
Well, the properties were larger and, and took longer to do. So last year on the properties, we did, we blew through them pretty quick, but a lot of them were just a foundation or a small structure. We dealt with bigger homes this go-round this year.
So you're aware that, you've looked at the Bryce property?
Uh, yeah, I have the survey, and so I want to say, I have to look back at the asbestos report. I think half the structures are deemed asbestos and half are not.
I just want to throw something out there too, there's a lot of people piddling through them houses. I like to go and save them. You know, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I'm with you, twenty-two, after ever. Back down. After ever, Mistress Court, that's that question, not too far, but right next to it. I want to go on too, it's just, you know, I feel better after him, Mr. Berg, saying twenty-five thousand, because without him here, we're just, like you said, Sherry said, leaving open in the checkbook.
So I guess, I guess we need a motion to approve adding twenty-five thousand to the Widow Brian account?
And let's make a motion to do thirty. Twenty. Well, the only reason, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but even if we have, I don't want to shut it down.
I don't, I don't want to shut it down, and I know that, I know by, I feel good now about what he's saying about that more than likely we're going to be through in a month, and we won't have to come back here and ask for two more thousand dollars in case we don't do the twenty, in case twenty-five don't make it, okay? And I know now, I feel comfortable that the SRA and he is going to work diligently on the number, and that would leave twenty-four hundred dollars, I reckon.
That's going to put us at approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars cost compared to something.
I, I get it.
I, I get it.
We had a hundred forty, no.
We haven't, we haven't spent that yet.
Bubba's just carrying them, them numbers across. I think the Bryce's property is probably gonna go quicker than property. They're all failed there. They have.
About all failed.
They've just about all fell down before the, except for the house. And the house seems to be made out of center block. So.
And, and I hear that. I agree with that from a tear down perspective, but also from a home's perspective, they were three miles from the dump before and now they're gonna be thirty-three miles. So you're gonna eat that cost as well.
Well, they, well, it's not, it, I think.
They're gonna put more in the dumpsters, which is the reason I said that. There's not, the, the, the structures are, are basically all but failed.
Over the years, the years, the years, the timber being, trees being fell on top of. Uh, so I think you're gonna be able to actually put more on, uh, what you need.
So the house on, um, the Thompson property house that we have to, uh, do, the sheet, the ceiling is asbestos. So that's gonna be an abatement. The rest of the property will go as regular debris. Now, on the Bryce properties, the ones that do have asbestos, i- it's, it's more than just a small portion. So therefore those asbestos positive properties will have to go all as.
It's siding on it, right, Rodney?
Um, yes. I have to look back at the report on one of them, but quite a few structures did have some type of asbestos, um, positive test that came back. So, um, like I said, I think Thompson property will knock out pretty quick once they have their contract in place with the abatement company. Um, and then move to Bryce and that, that's our last one. Um, now, I overheard at one time that there was a foundation that was missed somewhere prior to us. I- is that correct? That needs to be removed still or?
Slab. Yeah. So when TM come down and did the inspections, uh, Sherry helped me with this. They did a closeout audit on site inspections on which project? This, this four, what, what they come down and did and do it, you know, what project was that? I don't.
Twenty-two.
Okay. So they, they did site inspections on that. There was a slab that was left on Kendrick forty-one twenty-two in the Nichols Creek area. And was overlooked because they were gonna, they was waiting on a permit for engineers to use that as fill material. So they didn't demo it, well, they got overlooked. They didn't get overlooked by TM when they did their site inspection. So that slab has to be taken up when they leave the Thompson property going to the Bryce property. So that's what he's, that's what he's talking about. But that's in close, that's close. Uh, so from the landfill, that's probably gonna be eight miles.
Well, the slabs go to the SRA facility.
No, they're not taking that to landfill. The SRA's putting. Yeah, right. That's, that's why I was creating, I'm looking at these costs, twenty-two thousand. I know none of the concrete went to that, to the landfill. Twenty-two thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for you.
So your cost on your hauling side, you're gonna have your demo fee per square foot, per the contract, and then you have your hauling and disposal pass-through cost per contract on the SRA contract.
So the slab on the way, it's gonna be the SRA carrying over, excavated down into the truck. Not a big slab, forty-five, thirty-five.
So on all concrete that we removed, you're not paying a disposal fee for concrete because it's not going to the landfill.
I'm agreeing with Mr. Paul. Let's go ahead and make thirty, get this behind us, this move forward.
There'd be another problem after this, of course.
There we are now. We got thirty-two thousand something still left.
All right. Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion. We transfer thirty-two.
All right. Motion is made by Commissioner Benson. Need a second on it? Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right. No, yeah, item number five. Discuss changes made for the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to House Bill thirty-four seventy-four concerning jurors.
It's gonna be twenty dollars instead of ten, and then the second day it's gonna be fifty-eight instead of five and four. Also, the exemption age of seven percent increase from seven to seventy-five. But we will be getting a reimbursement of fourteen dollars for every, for the first day and thirty-four dollars for the second.
Actually, it's going from thirty-four to fifty-two on the second day in baseball.
Yes.
Yes.
So we just, basically we need to budget a little extra money for jury next year.
When we, uh, yeah, right now, we still have twelve thousand four hundred and ninety dollars left. Look at that if you're budgeting. Which I think we discussed that at the last budget workshop, we could be a positive retention. That's just one of the reports.
Okay. Okay. So we don't have to take any action on this. So moving to item number six. Discussing of appropriate extended COVID nineteen disaster declaration. So I need a motion to extend.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner White. I mean, Commissioner Benson.
Wait a second.
Second by Commissioner White. See, I knew I had you in there somewhere. And then item number seven. Discussing of appropriate extended Hurricane Laura Disaster Declaration Act until August the eighth, twenty twenty-three. I need a motion to extend that. What on the other? I make a motion there. All right. Need a second on that one? Second, second, first motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Pompit. All in favor on both motions?
Uh, uh.
All against? For both of them as planned. Just hoping there is one for. All right. All right, moving along to item number. It's discussing of appropriate execute the settlement participation and release forms regarding settlement offers from Walgreens, CBS and Walmart in the matter of the Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of County of Newton versus Purdue Pharma.
This is another opioid settlement, multiple defendants across the board. Of the defendants from Walgreens, Walmart and CBS. And, um, so what you're approving today is to go ahead and agree to that settlement with them. Um, the direct payment to Newton County for those three settlements is a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twelve cents. But, uh, Walgreens has fifteen years to pay theirs out and theirs is forty-five of that. CBS, um, has ten years to make their payments on it and Wal. All of that upfront, but over time, um, and I've reached out to see, like, do we expect a payment here or how does that work? And I don't have an answer on that yet, but it's, the total on it is a little over, um, hundred and eleven thousand that Newton County will get from this settlement. And then additionally, they're gonna pay, um, almost six and a half million is gonna be added into that regional fund that Newton County is gonna go in and apply for, for money. But applying for it. So that's what the settlement is with those three defendants. And we gotta accept that by our next, the next couple of weeks if we're gonna accept that settlement.
Yes, it has to be, uh, submitted by all this first. So we, there's been some of this ask of different defendants back.
Yes.
And were they also, uh, set up? Some on the paper plan?
So, um, one of them, we've already received that. It was forty-two. Is that someone else's name? Um, we already, the first defendant that we settled with, and we got their payment in four, and I believe it was four, about forty-two. Um, the next one was going into the, the regional pool that I mentioned that we're going in, we have to go on the platform. And then these are three more of the defendants. And there's a bunch of defendants overall. And they keep kind of chipping away at settling with different ones. But we did get that original chunk.
Anyway, we'll know how much we're gonna get each year by budget timing.
Since during this meeting, so I would have to answer hopefully by this point, and I don't have an answer, but I think we can buy the budget workshop this afternoon and maybe have an answer. Right? On how the actual distribution. Anyway, so that's what your approval today is settling with these three defendants. Including that settlement agreement, Walgreens, CBS and Walmart.
Approve the settlement participation on these three settlements?
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor? All against? Motion is paid. All right, uh, item number nine, discuss updates concerning the district attorney's office. Uh, we've got, I've got another couple bids coming, but the first bid we got was way over what money we had allocated for the project. So we're trying, and that didn't include, uh, flooring, electrical. And so we're trying to get a couple more bids, trying to get the cost down on it. Um, and that's basically where we're at on it. Uh, the first bid come in at eighty-five-five. And that was without anything as far as electrical, air conditioning or flooring. That was just building offices. How much was it? Eighty-five-five.
Eighty-five.
We thought it was gonna come in under fifty, so we're gonna have to regroup. So.
So yes. Just for the record.
Yes, we are, we are gonna. Yo, it just, first bid kind of blew us away.
So just, those that we got, we, we haven't spent any money in this building.
No, we haven't spent any money.
County has done all the demo. So we, we're at approximately hundred and three thousand over that now?
Yes. Okay. Uh, item number ten, discuss updates on Newton County grant status. Mark, you. I should've said Crystal one.
Just for the house. We still have the, the last two buyouts that we're trying to finish up under the DLO, um, project. And those, those draws have actually been submitted to request the funds for closing. Um, hopefully that'll be able to happen soon to get, get those closed out. As far as on the, the second page is your, is the Harvey buyouts. Um, and right now, we, we've got four appraisal. Which approved in the appraisal quarter, I talked with Mr. Parker this morning and he said he should have those to me by the end of the week, except for there's one, he's having some problems, uh, highly comparable homes in that area. Trying to pump the numbers about them. Might take a little bit longer. Um, then we have, uh, seventeen more of it, and we do a view. We, we've been told that those have, most of those have been reviewed. They just have to, um, find us out the request for additional information if there's anything that. To tie it up to get them approved. As soon as those are approved, we'll also get those appraisal. Should be able to get out some, at least some of the offer letters basically. Any questions about the housing part?
So I guess this is a question for Mark and yourself. So when I read through this file program policy, there are some, uh, I guess incentives for relocating within Newton County. Is that correct? Or we should are in this file? Have we had any takers on that, Mark?
We have not. Crystal, you can probably speak to it better than I can, but it's dotted across the board. Everybody gets that one.
And it, and it has more to do with, uh, just where they relocate and it's also more of a reimbursement program. So that money doesn't come upfront. We have to show where they moved to, that they moved outside of the floodplain. So it adds a lot more streams attached. And so that's why we're. And that's why we don't see a lot of people.
Yeah. Is it because it delays the getting their money and getting out or?
It doesn't really, it doesn't delay the getting out, but a lot of times it's, uh, it adds, they're not done. Like they can move, but then we still have to do more applicable as far as getting, getting first and proving that they, that we have to prove that there's an extra need also. Um, so like if, if we have to show that we're in their new house, we've built, um, that they didn't get in. So it's not just, uh, you know, if you're extra five thousand dollars or whatever, it's, we have to, to prove that they needed that. And so far we have.
And they have to stay in the county.
Same, yeah. That, and that was up to, uh, we can prove that by, by this option, yeah.
Maybe just, there's a lot of tax base on this paper. It's been fortunate that most of them have, most of them, majority of them have relocated within Newton. It's a lot of, it's a lot of homes. It's not that much property relocated.
And that, and that is one of the things that when they, when they, to get those incentives, they have to relocate outside the floodplain. So that's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Just adds a lot more streams to it.
But that has been, I, I haven't seen anybody trying to relocate.
Um, maybe a timeline for, to get all these completed.
Last two should, I would say, since the draw process usually takes about six to eight weeks. At the day time, we had the contractor on like through this and getting his, him open. I would think those last two, they move as well with the draw to get possible. A little bit. It's worth to the business right now, we're waiting on them. At this.
Morning Judge, Commissioners.
Morning.
Every month would come before y'all, we talk to you about the grants that we're assisting the county with. But you don't see much in the background of that for what's going on. I brought just a little bit of the paperwork so y'all can take a look at it. What you're looking at. Testing infrastructures. We talk about phase two. This is the environmental assessment for phase two. This is the environmental assessment for one grant. Unfortunately, there is no slump involved in that. Every piece of paper that's in that folder is required document. We have that for every grant that we administer on behalf of the county. We provide the county with copies of every bit of that as well as all of the things that we keep up with on behalf of the county. Real quickly, as far as the GLO. You know, typically all the day of Commissioners Court, we also have a meeting that afternoon, the conjunction. I know last month and this month, y'all were working on budgets. That affects the time y'all have available. We have not had those meetings. Next month, we're hopeful to be able to go back to that and have that meeting. GLO has expressed that they would like to put you here in person for that meeting next month if possible. Glennis. Meeting virtually, y'all see her on the screen a lot. She's the project coordinator that we've been coordinating with, request sometime with the GLO on the Newton County GLO projects. Glennis has accepted a promotion with GLO. She will no longer be the project coordinator. And she would like to introduce the lady that's going to be taking over as, as the project. Mrs. Lena Trevina will be taking over the projects for Newton County. And once again, they would both like to be able
First, there's Mr. For Newton County, he'll be having GLO.
All right, so we filed some extension request for that eighty-dollar grant for regular. This transition promotion. Is it going to impact that request?
No, it will not. The other thing with that, we have, as we do every month, if the GLO is not going to participate in our meetings, we reach out to them, we request an update on coming to this meeting. They were going to have that information for this morning. If it is issued, we do not have that information. The latest information we have is a meeting that we had with GLO, we're going to have it. But we were wanting more current information. One of those amendments that we have requested is for the twenty sixteen housing. Now, a week and a half ago, GLO said that our Glennis, our project coordinator with GLO, said that it was her understanding that been approved. We requested a copy of it. Do not have a copy at this point in time. Judge, I don't know if y'all recall signing off on that amendment or not, but
I do.
You did sign off on it.
Yes.
So that amendment apparently has been approved. We just do not have a copy of that.
So silly question, one amendment.
The one for the twenty sixteen housing.
Sign off, what does that mean to sign off on this?
It means the, the contract extension that we requested for that grant has been approved. We, we submitted amendment to extend. Now, I'm not going to swear to it, I don't have a copy of it, but it's my understanding that it has been approved. All right, we have two others that are in play. One is far the phase two, twenty sixteen infrastructure project. Actually, and then we've got D two twenty. That's the project that involves precincts one, two, and three. That's the one where we were over budget. We've gone back, we submitted an amendment to reduce some of those projects out of that grant and reduce the scope of. That is my understanding. Ago, both of those amendments request should be executed prior to the end of this month. As well, I'm sorry, as well as the, the place too, I'm sure. They said all three of those are looking good. They're anticipating them to be executed prior to the end of this month. All right, so let's kind of back up just a little bit. Crystal talked about the two buyouts, the Harvey forty-three thirty-two HMGP. Once again, since last month, we have reached out to TDM numerous times. Best we can get is, we're working on it, it's in play, it's in FEMA. We did get a request from TDM. It's referred to as the RFI or Request for Information. And it is for your project. They requested three documents from us, our, our three separate items. We're working on those items. We, we have until Friday, so we have until the twentieth to submit that information back. It's our intention to have it back to them by this Friday.
Judge, is that what TDM is working on specifically?
No, this is some other stuff.
Your turn?
I, I don't know.
My progress, where are we missing who's working?
Pat Oakes is working with us and then our office is working on it. I have one thing that's referred to as a benefit cost analysis. Basically what that is, that is a FEMA-driven document that we have to complete with every infrastructure grant briefing. And it's where they take a look at the benefit of the project versus the cost of the project. We did submit that in projection when we went back to TDM and requested.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. So this is, so what you're saying with that request of more information? Nothing you need from Newton County to support your efforts.
Nothing we need from Newton County. And we need some information from the engineer. We've reached out to the engineer, getting that far. The rest of the information we're completing internally.
What they requested from us was, you know, project was completed past initial timeframe. So we need to write a letter to justify project was completed and then precinct four was, they had a cost overrun on some of the materials used. So they want us, why was the cost more than what originally specified in?
That's separate than what you.
That is not a project. It's totally separate from what.
So what you're talking about, that is on, none of the projects we have paid.
No.
That's some complete.
Shepherd Brown, right? Shepherd Brown.
There's a couple different roads. One of them, I think, was Shepherd Brown.
So who is working?
I've got myself and Courtney working on it. And then we need some help, we'll get Angel to work on it too.
And, and just for clarification, and folks, I know that you've pressed down a run together, especially when you have things popping up on several of them at one time. As it relates to HMGP, as far as active grants, as far as priority. What you see right there is what our firm has assisted in. That's a sum total. All right. So MIT, there again, that project, that's the one D two twenty, the one once again that went after bid zone. Price, prices came in way over what we were anticipating. And, and we have submitted that amendment to GLO. GLO came back with a couple of questions. They said everything looks good on that. You want to read through that real quick?
Philip was the one that bought on that.
Once again, D two twenty, to the best of our knowledge, the ball is into GLO's court. It has been into GLO's court for several weeks right now. They need no additional information from us. It's a matter of them processing the paperwork in order to get that amendment. There again, that's one of the ones that they're anticipating amendment to be signed and completed prior to the end of this month. The bottom one on here that carries over to the second page, once again, that's the twenty sixteen infrastructure. That's the one that we've got the environmental packet here on as far as specific roads. Once again, we got submitted an amendment request to the GLO to extend that contract today through June of next year. They are telling us, once again, I can't swear for GLO. They are telling us they do not see an issue with that. They anticipate that amendment being approved without any problem. That amendment does have to go through another two staffs or both two people within the chain there at the GLO due to the fact that we are requesting that extended that long based upon the age. They're telling us they don't see an issue with it. It's going to take a few more days to get those two additional signature comments.
But we have, we have these projects out to be at.
They are currently out for bid, but opening will be July the fifteenth. I discussed that with GLO. I said, we, our clock is ticking. Once we get those bids in, it's, it's time for us to make something happen. They said, once again, I'm repeating what was told me, they do not anticipate that presenting an issue. They're anticipating our amendment to be executed to the point.
And Mark, you did say on the, on the Harvey MIT that they should be okay by Friday?
Friday?
Yeah, you should have it signed off on Friday, by Friday or something, or your paperwork in by Friday?
Oh, oh, yeah, the Harvey HMGP. Yeah, now what that is, that, that is specific to Commissioner Powell's project. They came back and requested more information.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the hard way.
The bridge. Bridge.
Okay, now that one, they are telling us they anticipate that amendment being and once again, that was the information as of week and a half ago. Apologize, let me see if they, if this.
That's okay. It's out, so it ain't going nowhere.
All right, that takes us down to the Texas Department of Agriculture grant. We are currently working on the environmental assessment on that one, getting that. The design work on that on, on their side. GLO regional MIT. That's the application they came back, GLO had problems with. They said, we'd like for y'all to back up, take another run at this. We, that application has now been resubmitted to the GLO and is, is under their. And then we've got the twenty twenty-two TDM HMGP. There again, those applications are still in the pending status. I'll admit it far, the other is the generator for the, for Reeseville. Sorry, got my mouse getting dry. TDM, like everybody else, once again, is running behind. They, at this point in time, they have not approved any of those period of applications.
It won't be a problem. Where you still on money? Paying the match?
No. And the board of directors signed off on that, that part of the application. Any question on any of those? Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir.
No, this is sort of like the time and the, if we're looking back at the end of the month on that phase two. So when, whenever we open the bid on the eighteenth, I want to do it in if we don't, coming in precinct two. We're going to be ready to. Yeah, turn the contract.
Now, once again, guys, I'm not the sake of swimming. Until we have that executed contract, I would not sign a contract with that contractor. Yeah, and I don't mean to be patting the butt, but I'm sharing with y'all the information that GLO shared. Their information was executed by the end of the month. It will not present an issue with the timing of receiving the bids on the end thing.
So, so if that's done, then we'll be ready to go back.
Yes, sir.
Bring it forward court. Well, then you'd be waiting for a contract.
Well, and cross your fingers they come in as a budget.
Bring it forward court, set the.
Yeah, yeah, that's the government for court.
Someone will be at school when you open the bid. Yeah, we just need to have, whatever day that is, we need to have a special court and move out on that. Opening those bids and time it out. Uh, what's the process if they don't come back under the, or, or over?
You, you got two options. Or can repay the difference? Or you can reject all bids? Well, let's back up a bit. You can pay the difference. And see if there's anything that you could realistically cut on the project if one comes. In which case you would have to go back to all bidders and say, all right, we're going to cut this particular thing out. amend your, your bid and let's see what we can do. Where you negotiate with every one of those. I'm sorry, that's, that's very seldom done. Typically, they reject all bids and go back out.
So Jerry, if, if those bids come in high, we say, well, we want to pay, let's just say they're a little bit above. About GLO, we use road bridge loans to pay the difference since it is on road bridge?
Well, they done it before the pass.
So was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So will that restart any approval clock for, for TDM? Maybe you have to go back for reapproval if.
Now you're trying to trick me here, this is GLO we're talking about.
Okay, refer, phrase the question.
Start the clock as far as the amendment.
Approval, yeah, amendment.
No.
Okay.
No, now what? Wouldn't restart the clock. But let's, and that's this worst case scenario, we saw it on D two twenty, bids came in through the ceiling. If they were to do this, and Commissioners Court said, all right, we're going to have to go back, we're going to have to whittle something. We're going to have to revise the scope of this project. If you're going to do a scope change, then that does have to go up to GLO because you're changing what you said you were going to do in that contract.
A major project.
Yeah.
Minor culverts changing.
Culverts, materials that are used, uh, D two twenty was considered a major because we were taking roads out. We were taking out projects we had told the citizens we were going to do with the reference. When you do that, then you've got to go back, you've got to conduct another public hearing. You've got to give them the opportunity to voice their code.
Asshole with the white rock would be a major.
No.
No?
No. Still, I'm accomplishing the same goal that you set out to do with that grant. But if you're going back, if the number of beneficiaries that are benefiting change beyond twenty percent. And once again, each one of these projects, every road that we do, every bridge that's done, we have to tell them who the beneficiary, beneficiaries are of that specific project. We have to have documentation in most instances, not. There are ones that are established by the agency that we're working with for each specific grant. But most of them have to be low life projects. And that's where at least fifty-one percent of the people that we have determined that are benefiting from that project are considered low modern. So if we affect the beneficiaries, if we change the project, which most, most are, they don't allow that. If you've got a road project and you say, well, I really don't need to do that road project. If you're changing the whole. If you're changing the whole scope of the project and that's a major change, we've gotta go back, we've gotta have a, we've gotta let it back down.
We did conduct a public hearing on these changes.
On D two twenty?
Yes.
And that was because we were taking out projects that we had in the initial application. On the, on the phase two project, once again, and this, this phase two, this has been in play, I, I'm ashamed to tell y'all how long. But it's, it's been years. Um, so, and, and when we moved the money, that, that was huge, and some of y'all weren't here there about to know how long that, that took out for us. But, yeah, we had to have public hearings with that, we had to have notices, the whole nine yards, went up to GLO, they finally approved it, then it had to go up to FEMA, FEMA had to approve it, once again, that was a long drawn out process.
Yeah, it's all. Then I tried to get behind, I said. Everything waiting for GLO.
Any, any other questions, gentlemen? Thank y'all very much for your time, once again, at this point in time, the GLO, uh, is, is anticipating it'll be in here next month. Uh, now, if everything works out, it'll be the afternoon meeting like y'all, y'all had previously, it'll be 1:30, 2:00 o'clock, whatever it works out.
Well, I guess since they're the ones with $8 billion, it's kind of open, 1:00, 8:00. You can get them there.
I hear you. And kind of as an incentive on that, once again, I, I can't speak for the GLO. After them telling us these amendments are gonna be approved this month, they don't want to be standing up here in front of the date the next month. So, they're gonna, they're gonna be pushed, be pushing to make it happen. All right.
All right.
We appreciate it, y'all, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, well, thank you, Mark.
Commissioner, is there any?
I've got some other right there, cause they're 14.
I got some of those.
All right, we got item number 11, is payment of the bills, and we got Sherry standing up here.
General fund, 102,500, $54,000. These are the times saved by 28 hours. Roadie fish law, $398. Roadie bridge precinct four, 154,009, $337.91. Fisher's. $0.03. Fisher's special precinct two, $9,475. Fisher's special precinct three, $50,141.33. Fisher's special precinct four, $44,207.26. Here, contraband, $300. All-in waste disposal, $3,774.3. Motor registration, $30,000. Nettet County Library, $96.41. Power to mitigation grant. And for $609.4, for total of all funds, $373,947.68.
Sherry, I have some questions, uh, you was out last week. Get a chance to ask, but can I go through these bills? So, I see, uh, I guess in, under utilities, it's a light bill for precinct four barn and the prison, but I don't see one for precinct two, precinct one.
Same time, different line of address.
So, I'm just trying to find out, are we supposed to, do precinct barns supposed to be paying their own bills or utilities?
This, yeah, you are supposed to be paying. Your precinct three, the tack off, which one you talked about was precinct?
So, you see voluntary fire department storage precinct four, two little bridge, and, and I don't know why.
Where it means you tell them, this is where they're budgeted, this is where the money was budgeted, and every, we have a sheet.
Okay.
And when the bills come.
Not a question, but maybe it's rather safe, to me, it looks like the general fund, fans and stuff, they should, um, or at least for precinct four. And this is a storage building for the precinct four barn, voluntary fire department storage, what we use for storage, there's nothing on it, and it, it's $203 last month, it's $300 something dollars.
So, why are we, if you don't use it, why do we have electricity on in there?
There's what I just said, there's nothing on in the building, the only time we go, and we go into the building, we flip a light switch. Why that bill is so high, but the judge is paying for it, I bring it up, just, we need to figure it out, I don't know who, I don't know who the call was finding that out. Last two, two bill paid, we paid over $500 for that old fire department, there's nothing on it.
Get disconnected, you're not using it?
I don't want to get the lights disconnected, I'm saying, too much, it's, it's $200 to $300 a month, and we don't do anything. When we go in it, we flip a light switch on, pick up signs and get what we need, walk out, flip it off, I mean, it shouldn't be that, it should be already booked.
Yeah, well.
And it. Maybe, I might need to figure that out, and I, I know you didn't put it there, I'm just saying it's.
Have y'all noticed on page two, uh, we've got $25,000 to pay for our 2021 audit. We had a conversation the other day, or I had a conversation with the auditor, and, you know, he's waiting for the. An audit, I told him we need our 2021 audit, we don't need to wait for TDM, and he's, you know, I told him we would pay him when we got the audit, so, but, you know, after some discussion, GLO has, has talked about withholding funding from the county, because we don't have our 2021 financials fleet. So, we're still at the mercy of the auditor, so we're waiting on him, supposed to have. Confident over the audit, because I thought, I told him, don't wait on these, precinct rules, we have to pay back freedom, we need our 2021 audit. As, you know, to me, it has no bearing, 2021, uh, that should be captured in the audit of this current year. So, at 2:00 today, we're having a, from our Zoom meeting, hopefully to get our 2021 financial audit. And then. Out here for an auditor for 2022, so we're running into the same issue next year, but we're running into this year. And that's what that 25,000 is for.
So, we had a bill on here, uh, Texas Computers Association, $5,082. Have I overlooked those, or is that the first bill we got?
Well, we did, $1,300 a month, but this one had some added.
Yes, basically, uh, they've had a Texas. Many years, um, it was 16 hours, and we paid.
$1,300 a month.
$1,300 a month, so, anything over there, 16 hours, they bill, there was a couple, uh, after-hours calls to the sheriff's office when the everything went down, that's a power outage, so, that's, that was the $5,000 there. They had three after-hours callouts for the sheriff department, and then. We had them distracted, bleak wood, so all their services went out. On the JP and the Danny's office, they had no internet. Computers blown out.
But we're square with Texas Computer Associates?
Yes. So, basically, we pay them, basic contract of $1,300 a month for 16 hours, and we've been paying them that for years, once they get above that. 16 hours, that's when they soak them.
They've had them do some major risks, I mean, they had to pull a bunch of emails.
Yeah, they spent a lot of hours.
Yeah, I'm just, that's what I'm saying, I, I was expecting something to pop up any day now, $100,000.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we are square with it.
It's not gonna be a huge invoice.
That's, well, this, this next question, so under. So, got some fuel costs there. This is the second bill pay in a row, the last two bill paid, we paid $132 in fuel cost, petition center, and that, right?
That's where they deliver the mills on wheels, all throughout the county.
All right. They mean to leave it.
They have two vans, they.
Just for the fuel, for the food thing?
Yes.
Texas Human Resources. They qualify whoever pisses in the oil.
Yes, Health and Human Services. Yes, well, once, once the billing gets, it's still waiting on, uh, we're waiting on the billing from. OIG, Office of Inspector General, for a month and a half, waiting on the approval, where they start paying the counter back. And it's. Close to $5, I'm not, I'm not sure the exact, it may be 534, it's around $5 a meal. And then Dick Cud, I believe, pays 434, for 4,000. The ones that they serve in the center.
Sherry, last question I had on the back page right here, the maintainer paper, that's not listed, is that for a reason? The debt service paper on 154? Oh, no, it's on the previous page, okay, it's on the previous page. You know, looking at these deals, I have these, for the courthouse, civic center. We're paying almost $3,000, I think.
Is this a month?
Month, month.
Now, they know that, they say, it's not a lot of bill.
Yeah.
My house got $9,000. I bought my barn, my.
My house wet.
My house was $9,008.
Oh, God. Y'all had to go to bed. That'd be terrible, also.
The house in the north is $1,580.
Light the candles and turn on the lamps.
So, does anybody have any more questions about the, all right, I need a motion to approve the bill.
All right, Mike.
Motion made by Commissioner Vincent. Thinking about Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, so. Paying the bill. So, that was all on the, let me give this sound. Workshop, we're going, I'm gonna talk about the.
Hold on.
You're getting, you're getting ahead of yourself. Hey, on item number 12, uh, you know, we put on our pledge of workshop, I was out last week, Sherry was out last week. So, we didn't really have anything, uh, to present this morning, but if anybody, uh, had their sheet cut out, well. About to speak on it or add anything, I was gonna open it up for that.
Return him one, but he had to change it next year.
Okay, Mike, you didn't have any change from last year? Okay, I, I see you turn one in, but, do you wanna, okay, if you come up.
But before you change that, ever. For some reason on here, we have a, a line item that says association meetings and trainings, we really just need one, so, it's weird when it. I just had it be into, um, association meetings, and then I did add, um, I think it was $500 to that, just because any time that we go to training, one person alone just registered with our store, which is retired, is over $300, $370. Then we're talking about, and. Here in hotels, that, so, it was just a. That still won't probably cover, but, um, the only, and then I added another $100 to our software maintenance, that's still a lot of, a lot, but if you have software maintenance, does increase, um, but we have a pretty good, um, I did have a request to add an eight-hour to one of mine, which, it would be an eight hours, we lead them from 16 to 24, and that is specifically. And some employees there are in two part-time, one is 16 and one is 24, when the two full-time people have to leave to go somewhere, that leaves much. Have to go to training, I literally have to shut down libraries, we don't usually do that, at the beginning, basically, we had to do that. Um, so, it would just be to add, um, eight-hour day to the 16-hour person that. So, do we doles, currently works eight hours a week, if I could get that open two days a week. They got me. I don't know if you can, it's hard to accomplish, eight hours a week. And then, uh, during, a couple of years ago, when we had our budget cut, we had $5,000 budget cut, a loss of 100 for that library, so, currently, have a decrease in the current new library rate, and I have notebook budget in, to be the library, so, I'm just asking to turn back into that budget to offset current ones, because we're currently supporting two libraries.
All right, thank you. Does, anybody else have anything they want to add to the? All right. So, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion made by Commissioner Vincent.
He's gonna second.
Second by Commissioner, all in favor?
Aye.
I didn't think y'all wanted to leave there for a second.